Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting, and I can tell that it's almost the end of the year because our city staff out there has got a lot of Christmas cheer so far. So, one more meeting is all we got until 2025. All right, Austin Maxwell, you have our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you. Family, Father, thank you for this time this evening. Please be with us and the council. Please watch over us. Please help us make the best decisions for all the citizens of Murfreesboro. And please let us remember what this season is about, for in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have, well, I was gonna say we have a Stars Award. Randolph.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Tonight I have the privilege of recognizing the recipients of the Stars Award for the month of November. As you know, the purpose of the award is to honor and to recognize those employees who go above and beyond their regular call duties, um, defining external service to both our, excuse me, service to both our internal and external customers. This often means being responsive and supportive and demonstrating empathy toward others in a meaningful way. Tonight's ceremony kind of reminds us of what happened last month. It's more like deja vu. If you recall, we had two individuals from the street department who also received an award for aiding someone. And these recipients tonight, both Adam Todd and Ron Davis, had similar qualities. They saw someone in need, responded with empathy and action and made a difference. Adam and Todd are part of the Water AMI Department. AMI stands for Advanced Metering Infrastructure. This is the department that manages and monitors the city's water meters. Let me tell you a little about each of them. Adam is the AMI manager. He's been with the city now a little bit over fifteen years. In 2015, he was promoted to crew leader, and later in 2019, he was promoted to his current role, which is the AMI manager. Over the years, I personally had the responsibility and opportunity to work with Adam on various issues. I've always been impressed with his willingness to step up and get things done whenever it matters most, the most. His leadership and dedication make him a natural choice for this award. I later found this afternoon that this is actually his third award, so he's an awesome individual. Ron is the AMI foreman. He's been with the city now for about nine years. He was promoted to crew leader in 2016, and last year he was promoted to the foreman of the AMI department. Ron's steady rise through the ranks speaks to his hard work, commitment, and readiness to take on greater responsibilities. These two gentlemen were nominated for the award by Kenneth Sheeks. Mr. Sheeks is a technician in the AMI department. He shared the following information regarding their action. On November the 5th, while driving down Broad Street, Adam and Ron noticed a woman who had passed out on the median. Imagine as if you would. Recognizing the serious of the situation, they immediately stopped to check on her. When they realized she was unresponsive, they called 911 and stayed with her until emergency services arrived. This isn't the first time both Ron and Adam have stepped up to help others. Kenneth noticed in his comments that they are always quick to assist, whether it's helping others or the fellow employees. As I was preparing for tonight's presentation, I called Adam to get more detail about what actually happened that particular day. True to form, Adam was very humble. He said, "We did what anyone who cares about others would do." He credited the first responders. He said that they are the real heroes in this situation. But as I told him, I said, "Adam, the story begins with you. You and Ron both. You actually did something when you solved a situation. That simple but powerful decision may very well save a life. So, Adam and Ron, you're both our stars in our eyes, and we're very proud of you. If you would, please stand. On behalf of the mayor, the city council, and the great city of Murfreesboro, it's our pleasure to recognize you as the Stars Award for November."
Hey, I'm supposed to get like extra vacation or something. You're the man to make it happen. Actually Valerie, yeah.
Check that hat. Yeah, we're gonna be okay. Here we go. We're live. When I say three, say pay raise.
Get into where you want. Hey, so, I was, tell me, your boys and...
This is Weston. He's ten. This is Woods. He's five. That's my wife, Melody. And then this is Ron's daughter, Harlow.
Harlow, okay. Awesome. Hey, and look up, look at the TV. Y'all are on TV. Don't do anything crazy. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Hey, so I think, for Adam, I know Valerie has a lot of sick time in vacation. Why don't we just take some of that and give it to the third time stars?
Yeah, I know. He may have capped out. He may have topped out.
All right, let's move, do we have any one for public comment?
No, sir.
All right, let's move to our consent agenda. You have eleven items. Is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda for discussion?
So moved.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Ordinance 24OZ41, zoning amendment along East Castle Street. This is second and final reading.
So moved.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to item thirteen, ordinance 24OZ42, rezoning property along Thompson Road, and this is second and final reading. Matthew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I would be remiss if I did not mention that Auburn was this close to being number one, thanks to Illinois not beating Tennessee the other day. But, at any rate, when y'all heard this on first reading on December the 5th, Mr. Mayor and council, you requested that staff provide you with two pieces of information prior to second and final reading. One was whether or not the county had any improvements planned for Thompson Road, and the answer to that is no. And the second question is whether the city and county could partner together on any improvements to Thompson Road. After the December 5th council meeting, staff reached out to Greg Brooks and Mike Hughes, and they are in the process of discussing opportunities to partner with the city right now, that considering the holidays, it would take them a little time to get back with us, and so we have not come to any resolution on that, but we have reached out to them to see whether or not there are any opportunities to make improvements to Thompson Road. Also, you'll see a revised pattern book included in the agenda materials. You'll recall that on December 5th, it was noted that there was some verbiage missing in the pattern book about the left turn and right turn lanes on Thompson Road that the developer would be constructing. He has since added that verbiage in the pattern book, and he has also added verbiage in there about a fence on the, I forget the name of those folks, but they had one of the properties that's basically surrounded on three sides by the subject property, and they requested a fence in between the common area and their property to create some separation, and the pattern book has been revised to reflect that. So, be happy to answer any questions for you tonight about this request.
We had a lot of discussion on Thompson Road. Adam, I haven't been in meeting since I met with Mayor Carr at three o'clock today.
Yes.
The question was how we determine what portion of the road that we're gonna annex? Why, I think we annexed the right of way, is that right?
That's typically what we would do, is we would annex the entire right of way. It's not like you wouldn't just annex half of it, you would annex the entire road right of way.
But is there a reason why we don't annex the entire road and not the right of way? That was the question.
The entire road being, like, the entire length of the road?
Did we annex the road on this, or just...
No, no.
Okay.
The property was annexed into the city limits in 2014 without the right of way.
Okay.
And so we did not take any annexation action to annex the right of way presently. So it remains in the unincorporated county.
That's my understanding, is that it is...
The overall discussion that we ended up having, and this may be something that the council wants to talk about in the year to come, that, you know, typically the county maintains roads, they're not rebuilding roads. So how we look at portions of roads that the city would impact, and how we maybe partner with the county to be able to rebuild some of those roads. So it was a really good discussion on how we do that. I did remind that after going through this whole process, I think there are two signal lights that, with this approval, that will be added on 99 and Armstrong Valley, is that right?
So there is one at 99 and Rivermont Way, if we could bring up my screen, and the new functionality of the screen. Thank you, Cable Department. Right here, so, you know, Salem Landing is a sizable subdivision, and there is gonna be a lot of traffic entering the subdivision and exiting the subdivision from New Salem Highway, and so the existing main access point at Rivermont Way, when it's warranted and provided that TDOT agrees, then the developer will be installing a signal at that intersection. Another benefit of the proposed development in the transportation system is there aren't a whole lot of ways to get from Thompson Road to New Salem Highway right now, and so this will actually, you know, making this connection to Thompson Road will actually give drivers, both in the subdivision and out of the subdivision, a way, another way to get from Thompson Road to New Salem Highway, because, you know, if you look at our GIS system, you see that there really aren't a whole lot of good convenient ways to get from one to the other, and so I think this will be a benefit, not only to the folks who live in the subdivision, but the folks, the existing residents in the area as well.
All right, any questions?
Darrell Nunn, I move for approval.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to land use matters, plan of services, annexation, and zoning for property along Butler Drive and Joby Jackson Parkway.
All right. Figuring out the new technology. This is the same property that you considered for zoning on first reading on December the 5th, and I mentioned at that, on that, at that meeting, that due to new noticing requirements that were passed by the General Assembly earlier this year, we stretched out the annexation to coincide with the second reading of the zoning. This is for property that is currently owned by McDonald Associates and QuickTrip. They own different parcels, and the city has a portion of the property under contract for, to add to its property to the north for the solid waste transfer station. The property, as you can see, is essentially surrounded by the existing city limits, so we're kind of filling in a gap here. The plan of services has been included in your agenda materials. The Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of this annexation at its October 30th meeting, and services will be able to be extended to this property relatively easy. I think there's still, to get sewer to it, there's still some, sewer will still need to be extended to it prior to its development, but I believe that, that, is that, Ms. Smith, is that, okay.
Yes.
I believe it might be coming with the roadway construction. Mr. Gore, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
Okay. And that, and the roadway construction is scheduled to be complete by the end of February, if I'm not mistaken. So as I mentioned, the Planning Commission voted to recommend the annexation and plan of services. I'll be happy to answer any questions about this before or after our public hearing tonight.
Thank you. All right, anyone wishing to speak for or against, if you'll come to the podium, if you'll state your name, your address, you'll have three minutes. If you're representing a group, you'll have five minutes. If you'll keep all of your comments directed towards the council, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the plan of services for this annexation for this 15.9 acres, please come to the podium. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, we'll now consider Resolution 24R PSA 43 for plan of services and annexation. Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Now, let's consider second and final reading, ordinance 24OZ43.
So moved.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to ordinance 24O46. This is amendment to the Ethics Code. This is first reading, ordinance 24O46. Adam.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. In September, the city council adopted a new Ethics Code for the city. This ordinance simply cleans up two items related to that ordinance. The first is, under prior policy, members of various bodies were required to make annual financial disclosures, and when I drafted the new Ethics Code, I inadvertently excluded members of the BZA and the Water Board from the language of the new ordinance, and so this ordinance before you tonight would just add them back in. So it's not a change from past policy, it's just a correction to the code that you adopted back in September. The other thing that this ordinance does is that it formally repeals the existing sections of the employee handbook related to the ethics policy and conflict of interest policies, so there is no confusion as to which, whether those policies apply or whether the city code apply, the ethics code applies, and in doing so, it makes it very clear that the ethics code that you adopted in September applies. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to all motion, item sixteen, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Phase Two Sidewalk Project, amendment number five.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. The city received a TDOT Transportation Alternative Project grant for the development and implementation of sidewalk project along Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard from Middle Tennessee Boulevard to near Minerva Drive. The original TAP grant award only covered eighty percent of the construction cost and was capped at one million dollars. The city then received a TDOT Multimodal Access Grant in the amount of $703,605 at a ninety-five state, five percent local match for right-of-way easement costs as well as additional construction funds under amendments number two and four. Since that time, with the development of the final construction plans and the easement purchases, a shortfall in funding required to meet the project delivery was identified. The city through TDOT's TAP program received an additional $153,928 in funds to offset the shortfall of the project at an eighty percent federal to a twenty percent local match. The city's twenty percent portion of the funds is estimated to be at $30,786, and we funded from the FY21 CIP budget for this project. Available for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kerr?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Hey, Mayor, can I give you guys an update on TDOT projects moving forward?
Sure.
Just wanted to give you guys an update. The I-24 Medical Center Parkway ramp and lighting improvement project is scheduled to let in May of 2025. The I-24 and Joby Jackson interchange lighting project is scheduled to let in March of 2025, and right now Thompson Lane is tentatively scheduled to be let October of 2025. So I want to give you guys an update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, we had a good meeting yesterday with Davidson County, Town of Smyrna.
Yes, sir.
And TDOT, talking about I-24 choice lanes. So, Jim, if y'all have got any questions on what may be coming on I-24 choice lanes, Jim can give you all that information. And Darren was there as well.
It'll be in my weekly note summary, too. Thank y'all.
Nobody likes to show off. Kidding, Darren.
Sorry.
All right, so, do we want to take Darren's vacation days away and give them to Adam's? All right, let's go to purchase of 910 Ridgely Road. Trey.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The city schools is seeking approval to purchase, for the purchase and sale agreement with Osborne Enterprises for the acquisition of real property located at 910 Ridgely Road to be used by city schools for the relocation of our transportation and maintenance department. Under the terms of the agreement, the district will purchase the property for $5.25 million. The agreement includes a sixty-day due diligence period. Contingencies for the purchase include successful completion of this due diligence process and approval by the Board of Education and City Council. The city intends to permanently occupy 4,800 square feet as part of its space needs requirement, and this constitutes ten point two percent of the total facility. Your packet includes a table outlining a proposed cost-sharing agreement. The expense to the city will be $829,187, which will be funded by the FY25 CIP. The remaining 4.6 million will be funded through the school's general purpose fund and county shared bond proceeds, and our team is happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
So moved.
Second. Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Trey. Donald, Merry Christmas. All right, let's move to purchase of properties in the RPZ Runway Protection Zone.
Mayor and members of the city council, tonight I ask for your approval of the capital improvement plan reallocation using a mix of 21 and 22 and general fund CIP money for the purchase of property at 1822 and 1830 Herald Lane for the appraised value plus closing cost not to exceed $764,000. This is, if you can recall, that in 2013, this was, these properties were identified in the airport layout plan as needing to be acquired at some point because they are located in the runway protection zone. This will be our sixth of the eight properties that were identified there along Herald Lane, and so I really appreciate the Airport Commission and your all's approval and support of moving forward as we take care of this safety issue. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to take them at this time.
No questions.
Go ahead. No, that's fine, go ahead.
No questions, I move for approval.
Second. Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to fitness grant purchases. Josh.
Good evening, council, Mayor. Chief McCluskey can't be here tonight, so I get to present this to you. Back in July, we're asking for your approval. Back in July, we were awarded a fitness grant, AFG, the federal grant, assistance to firefighters for a health and wellness program. What this grant's gonna cover is we're standardizing our equipment across all stations. We have a nutritionist and a physical therapist we're gonna bring in onboard so we can help the aches and pains of the men and women and get that, where maybe we're not using the less workers comp, we'll see how that works. And the total of the grant was, is $393,400. It's a ten percent match, the city, $35,763.69. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
If there are no questions, I move for approval.
Second. Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thanks, Josh. All right, we'll move to NeoGov Software System Agreement.
Good evening again, Mayor and council members. You have before your request to approve a consolidated three-year agreement with a company called NeoGov. It has four systems that we're looking to consolidate. Systems are attract, insight, employee import, and perform. These platforms streamline online recruiting, employee onboarding, data management, and performance evaluation. NeoGov has a proven track record with the city and have secured improved pricing by combining these contracts. The total agreements is $271,043, which would be allocated over three years. First year would be $88,617, year two, another $88,342, and in the final year, year three would be $94,084. This agreement would be funded by FY25, '26, and '27 budgets. With that said, staff is requesting your approval to move forward with this agreement. I'm available for any questions you may have.
I kinda sorta have no idea what you just said. But I'm sure you researched it well, so I move for approval.
Thank you.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Randolph, before you leave, I know it being the end of the year, we get to recognize all of these stars, but I want to tell you, it feels like every time that you do this, you're telling a story, which not only tells a story about what happened, but shows how much you care about our team, and so I want to tell you thank you, that I, not only do I enjoy listening and meeting our new Stars Awards, but listening to your sort of soliloquy of what they have done is part of the process that I enjoy, so thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
And I feel like you also, like, I want to hear you say "twas the night before Christmas." All right, let's move to Comcast Enterprise Dark Fiber Agreement. Mr. Jarrett.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. IT is requesting approval of a Comcast Master Agreement. This agreement ensures the city's existing fiber network is reliably maintained, meets operational demands, and safeguards critical services. Funding for this service is shared among the general fund, airport, water resources, and city schools, with city schools funding contingent on school board approval. The total annual fiscal impact is approximately $590,000. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
So moved.
Second. Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Matt. All right, let's move to the purchase of a Falcon six-ton patch body.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Raymond couldn't be here tonight, so I'm stepping in for him. Before you, as a request to purchase a Falcon six-ton patch body from Jet Vac Equipment in the amount of $159,045. The function of the patch body is to keep the asphalt at an ideal temperature, allowing for easier application and more durable repairs in any weather condition. This unit will replace an outdated unit that was originally purchased in 2018 and is no longer functional. The 2019 Kenworth truck, previously equipped with the old patch body, is being repurposed to carry the new one. This purchase is included in the fiscal year 2019. This purchase is included in the fiscal year twenty-five fixed asset budget. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
No questions. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to the purchase of snow plows.
Also, for your consideration, is a request to purchase seven Boss snow plows for pickup trucks and one front plow for a Kenworth dump truck from Viking Sives in the amount of ninety-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars. Funding for these plows is included in the fiscal year twenty-five fixed asset budget. Happy to answer any questions.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, purchase of rock salt.
Got that one through. Also, for your consideration, is a request to purchase one thousand tons of rock salt from Compass Minerals. As you know, salt is required annually to ensure streets remain passable during winter weather events. This purchase totals one hundred and six thousand six hundred and eighty dollars and funded by the street department operating budget. Happy to answer any questions.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, let's move to the agreement for intergovernmental services.
That's, that's me, Mayor. So, uh, what we have in front of you is to consider an agreement with Ramsey, Farah, Russell, and Smith for intergovernmental services, including legislative services at the General Assembly. This is for the twenty twenty-five legislative session, so it's, it's stated wrong in the memo, but the contract does show the, um, January one twenty-five through December thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty-five. Uh, the, the, this firm has, uh, done well for us in the past several years, and so we're asking for the council's approval of an expenditure of fifty thousand dollars in FY twenty-five, and it's funded by the department's budget, uh, and the export, and, and the portion expended in the next fiscal year will be similarly budgeted.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We don't have any board and commission appointments, any licensing?
Uh, yes, we have one beer permit for a name ownership change for a restaurant located at twenty sixty-nine Last Casts Pike. The applicant has met our requirements, and we recommend for approval pending final building and codes inspections.
Any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Any other statements to be paid?
No.
Any other business from our team? Mr. Jarrett?
Well, yeah. There's an item in front of you that outlines a request from IT, uh, for approval to renew, uh, ESRI subscriptions and technical support contract. ESRI GIS software supports economic development and public safety by maintaining accurate mapping and data for city operations. The total cost of fifteen thousand three hundred and thirty dollars is accounted for in the GIS operational budget. You have to answer any questions.
No questions. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, any business from staff?
Any from council? Merry Christmas. All right, we'll wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and we'll see you in January of twenty twenty-five.
Go Vols!
Go Vols!
Be safe on all that travel to Neyland North.
That's right.
Where's Matthew? Is he, is he already gone? Just like an Auburn fan to leave. We'll stand adjourned.